For our webinar titled Seamless Kindergarten Day, which will be very informative for all. Today, we have, we have quite a few people joining us on the platform. This is wonderful and we thank you for taking the time out of your day. Before we go any further, I'd like to make sure that everyone can hear us. If so, if anyone's having sound issues or needs any support in seeing us, just put it in the chat box and I'm sure Lorraine will be able to assist or somebody else. I know it won't be me, but we will be able to assist you. Well, people make, start chatting or you will be able to chat or send questions. If you have questions, you can note them in the, the chat box. And we'll get to them at the appropriate time. So we may not respond to questions immediately. So please just type them in and we will return to them. I'd also like to just make people aware that this will be recorded and we record so that we can share it with you, but also so it can be posted as the resource on our website. So let me introduce myself. I'm Gail Hunter and I'm a Director of the Building Blocks for Childcare B2C2. And I will be your moderator. I welcome you today to the seminar. Now, Lorraine will be doing a land acknowledgement for us, but I noticed she's currently on the phone. So we'll just give her a couple of minutes to finish off and she will be with us.
Hi, I'm, I'm ready to do the land acknowledgement. We're just having a little bit of trouble with one of the presenters, Julie. So hopefully she'll be able to join us again. So B2C2 recognizes that its work and the work of its community partners takes place on traditional indigenous territories across the province. We acknowledge that there are 46 treaties and other agreements included unceded land that covers the territory now called Ontario. We are thankful to be able to work and live in these territories. We are thankful to the First Nations, Métis and Inuit people who have cared for these territories since time immemorial and who continue to contribute to the strength of Ontario and to all communities across the province. B2C2 is honored to collaborate with Indigenous childcare providers, families and communities throughout the various territories. B2C2 also respects the calls for action of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission and their significance to early childhood education and policy. We share, share respect for the rights of and Canada's obligation to Indigenous peoples. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. So we're going to, we've been joined by five guests and is Julie on yet?
No.
No, we have five presenters and I'm just going to introduce all and they'll give a wave and then we will begin. We have Scott Patera Barak. We have Julie Seera. We have Leanne Pazowski. We have Amen Flahad. And we have Jen Wallidge. Did I miss anyone? And Melissa Hilton. And I apologize for any mispronunciations. I need to continue to work on those. So the first one we'll be hearing from will be Scott. And Scott is an administrator and systems administrator with the Waterloo District School Board and superintendent in the Hal, uh, Halton District School Board.
Thanks, Gail. I'm happy to join and talk a little bit about my experiences launching before and after school board run, before and after school care in two different school boards. It started in Waterloo. It doesn't feel that long ago, but 2010, 2009. With the introduction of Full Day Kindergarten, I was a system leader, a system principal at the time. And we got, uh, one of, one of the, you know, the boards that actually ran that first year. Many boards declared they weren't viable, but we were one of the few that ran a board operated program that year. I believe Halton also here on board was, was one of the others. And there are of course, a few other boards, but many boards opted, opted not in year one, because at that point in year one, it was not. It was to be board run. There was not a provision to have a third party operators. That came in year two. And then years later, I was in the Halton District School Board and it was just actually one of my last things that, that we did there was as a senior team, make, make a decision, a strategic decision to get back into operating after years and years and years of not directly operating some programs in the, in the Halton District School Board. And in, in both of those cases, I think it was motivated by, you know, as senior leaders, we have to decide, you know, and be number one, aware of what is the childcare climate like in the board? And sometimes we're not good at knowing. What is demand? How many parents are, you know, for these services? How, how much need is being fulfilled and how much isn't? And, you know, every board has an early years lead and they should be really dialed into that. And I think sometimes as school boards, we, we can be a little bit tuned out to what the demand for childcare is. And both cases in Waterloo and in Halton, we, we really discovered that, you know, most, most needs weren't being met. And I had a lot of mentors early on, you know, it started with Charles Pascal and Carl Quarter, Jeanette Pelletier, Xenat Jan Muhammad, all the Atkinson Center people bombarding my brain. And really made me, you know, even at the ministry with Jim Greve and Rod Peterson early on, these folks instilled in me the, just the sheer importance of it and the belief that, you know, this is important. Families need this care. And they also, the school's first approach, you know, we have the space, we have the materials. Let, let's, let's optimize, you know, we have the people, let's, let's make this happen as a, as a school board. And let's partner and, and, and pull this off. So in Waterloo, we found about a third of schools even had before and after school programs. It was very much a cherry picked approach by communities that could afford it, to be honest. It's very patchworky. And then years later in Halton, we had great partnerships with their third party operators, but it was very different there. We had programs in every school, but it was such a challenge for them to offer and meet demands within the schools. And to be honest, they're just struggling to even operate programs across all of the schools. So they had accessibility in schools, but not necessarily availability of the programs. We would have late lists of hundreds of parents and not even tapped into the demand. You know, parents are just getting normalized that, yeah, we have a program, but we can't take your kids because it's full. And so we just started looking at, at this strategically in Halton and, and knowing the importance and realizing and embracing that as a senior team. We decided to, to take that on in a small way. And Leanne and Aiman can certainly update where that is now, because it's, it's not, it's not easy work, but it's certainly doable. And I think, you know, if I talk about meeting some of the challenges as a system administrator, it's certainly creating the impetus for change at a senior table is so important. In both cases, getting our business people on board is absolutely critical. Because it is, it is a bit of a business operation and one that boards aren't, aren't used to. It's a revenue, revenue in, expenses out and getting boards set up to do that. I think in my experience and talking with colleagues across the province, that's what killed it in most boards. It was just this notion that, oh my gosh, there's so much, we can't do this. You know, I'm recently retired now, so I think I can maybe say things that are a little more unscripted than I used to. But I, I mean, I, I just call, call that right now and to say, that's, well, that's not true. Because now there are viable models that have been proven to operate and many of the folks are here today that show that boards can do this and can do this very well. And, and do it with great stability with no risk to the existing childcare fabric out there. And then in, in many cases, and boards step in and, and take this after school care piece, it strengthens the, the sector by not overly straining it. And, you know, I think it's a good for all piece. You know, if we look at our school principals, they feel very overburdened and overworked already. So this can be viewed as a challenge for them. And so we created, you know, and we have some of those people here with us today. We have our, our Melissa's and early hands who really make this work and say to principals, look, this is important. They explain the why to principals. Principals also need to understand this ethic. I think we've got away from a little bit when we first rolled out, uh, you know, full day, full day kindergarten. We spent a lot of time on the why, why it's so important. And then to think over the last 10 years, it could have faded a little bit. But boards can choose to understand the impetus. And we have young, younger administrative group now than when I started. And I think many of them have children, they understand the importance of childcare. They know the benefit of having it right in your school. And, and the stress it causes if you can't get access to, to care and what's that's like. So I think there are opportunities to build that ethic in our principals. I have always found they get it, they understand it and they embrace it. To be honest, those that run it in their schools, it, it can be a selling card. Families will choose your school based on the access to a program. It, it can be one of the deciding factors in terms of where am I going to enroll my child? If a school board A has it, school board B does not, you know, it, it's, there's choice out there. So I think principals understand that increasingly. And the ones that do have the program will speak positively. They can be our best ambassadors. At first it becomes very, it can be seem overwhelming, like one more thing to do. But with enough supports at the board level in place, it really takes that offline. And really makes it a positive in the school. And we, we've heard that again and again, I've heard it in two different school boards that it can run very well. And, and, and indeed does. I think, you know, to see a bigger expansion in, in my experience in, in a couple of boards and especially with the, um, the Canada early learning funding that's out there now. The demand is only going to increase for these programs and the importance is only more, you know, in our face each and every day. So I think the, the key here is to, you know, for boards to tap into that. What is the demand locally and how are we going to step in and fill that? How are we, you know, a partner with our CMSMs? In our case, the region of Halton and the region of Waterloo that I worked with, we're very close and very supportive. And very much understood the vision and how a school board can step in and help in this and help deliver service to families. And so both of those partnerships were great. I think boards have, every board is funded in early, uh, in early years lead at the superintendent level in Ontario. To, to be honest, I'm not sure we're squeezing enough out of those roles that we have. I think it's become a bit more watered down in, in the last 10 years. I think the ministry's taken their eye off it. They've continued the funding, which is outstanding, but just upping the expectations on this a little bit. And, um, you know, there's legislative measures in place that should ensure boards, if there are viable communities, and I would argue almost every community is viable. I have yet to see a, a community that is not viable, to be honest. So I think there's some game playing with the viability piece across this province. And boards are to operate a program if their, if a third party operator cannot. And I think, I think the ministry could enforce that a little bit, in a little bit stricter ways. Right now it's, it's, it's all carrot, no stick, to use that expression. And I, I think there's a little bit more force of legislation they could use to ensure, because to me honestly, families are being left out by the thousands right now in every school board in this province. And there are boards that are just shrugging and saying, no, sorry, we can't do it. But, you know, once again, I would say it's very doable. It has been done. There are boards on this call that have been doing it for over a decade. So that would be my sense in my, in my story and some of the big takeaways from my experience. So I'm happy to hang on and answer any questions and I look forward to hearing what the other panelists offer.
Thank you, Scott. That was very informative. Julie, would you like to go next? Is Julie on? Yes, any sound? Good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I am using my phone and the laptop. It seems like my browser doesn't accept Zoom, so I figured out how to get there. So I am here to talk to you about operating childcare programs. And if I'm not mistaken, I am here to explain to you how does our board A afford it? And B, how, how do we implement it? So I'm just going to start off quickly by saying, I'm Julie Seer. I'm the Early Learning Manager here at the OCDSB, the Ottawa Carlton District School Board. Our school board operates 68 before and after school programs. We operate three toddler preschool programs. We operate eight early on child and family centers. And we operate six childcare programs for our link and ESL adult learning programs. So at the onset of Full Day Kindergarten, the OCDSB had decided to adhere to the Charles Pascal's report on how to implement Full Day Kindergarten by also operating the program ourselves. And the way that we proceeded to do so at the onset was when legislation had said at that point that school boards only would be responsible for programs. We had implemented and started that process. Then the legislation had changed to also include third party operators. So our school board actually has a hybrid model. So I mentioned what we operate, but we also have 38 schools that have third party operators. So we have 28 third party providers that also operate. So from a board perspective, we implemented Full Day Kindergarten by having two REC's, Registered Early Childhood Educators in a kindergarten classroom with an OCT, the teacher. So an educator starts at seven and finishes at two. Another one starts at 11:15 and finishes at six. The financing of this program, obviously through ministry formulas, you are required to provide the ministry with how many educators are working alongside an OCT for a kindergarten classroom. So the majority of our seven o'clock staff or somewhere thereof, they are calculated through the ministry board allocations. The other R E C E, so to make things easier, let's say the 11:15 individual is paid through the Early Learning Department. And those salaries come from a combination of fees and any funding that we receive from the Canada Wide Early Learning and Childcare Agreement that the province, the, the federal government, the province provides to the city and then the city provides to us through different funding envelopes. So that's how we fund the ability to have two educators within one classroom. The benefits of doing that is essentially like the report Charles Pascal had written, that we have children four and five years of age that have contact with three educators during the day and sometimes other individuals within the school day, but they don't have different people in the morning and different people in the afternoon. They actually see both and the teacher throughout their day. So from a program delivery perspective and for the educator teams, we have seen a lot of positive reaction to having those educators work together. Of course, having three people work in a classroom, just like any other workplace, there are things that you need to learn to negotiate and, and work together. But from an operations standpoint, that literally doubled our staffing contingency for Registered Early Childhood Educators. Now considering that we also have multiple other programs, what it does for a Registered Early Childhood Educator is that when they come to work for the OCDSB, there is different job opportunities and sometimes advancement in job opportunities because we need coordinators to operate our toddler preschool programs. We need program supervisors, we need team managers, we need program managers. So from a recruitment and then afterwards, job advancement or career change, it really supports the Registered Early Childhood Educator to actually be able to work in different facets of early learning and care within a school board. As well as benefiting from a multitude or a difference of benefits and so on and so forth. So that's how we've been able to grow our programs. We didn't start at 68, obviously. They started with smaller numbers and then we continuously grow, which means every time that we open up a new school, we automatically open up the extended day program. So there's never a question of, um, will we have care before and after? When it comes to the toddler preschool through capital childcare investments, we make an analysis to see if it's in our best interest to operate toddler preschool that goes all the way to grade six. Or based on where we're at, is it more appropriate that it be a third party operator? So depending on where we're at and our ability to hire, that's when we decide on whether we're expanding our services are or not. So we are a very large employer. We have over 900 Registered Early Childhood Educators, but not all of them are unionized, because depending on where they work, I have some that are unionized and some that are non-unionized. Is there any other information, Melissa, that you, you think I could share?
Thank you, Julie. I think that's good. We'll hold for questions at the end.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And the, the people around these Hollywood squares, I would tell you that they work really, really hard to make this work. And I could tell you from a parent perspective, having a one stop shop is an amazing opportunity for families. And it's an amazing opportunity for school boards to actually get to meet their families when the family maybe has an infant or an 18 month old. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Julia. You really nailed it. You're calling it the one stop shop. I like that and you're absolutely right. It, we need more of them. The next person we're going to be hearing from is Leanne Pazowski, manager, um, early years and childcare programs from the Halton District School Board.
Actually, Gail, I think we're going to let Aiman speak first on behalf of Halton District and then I'll jump in.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And, uh, Aiman Flahad, I'm Superintendent of Education with the Halton District School Board. And I have the honor and the pleasure of working with Leanne Pazowski, who's going to share some more details with you, the incredible work that her and Scott had started. And, you know, this is an area that's been quite new for me this year to take on the early years portfolio as one of my number of portfolios. But Scott started sharing earlier about the program. And so recognizing that, you know, the before and after school programs in our, in our system here are really important. Families cannot function in some of our communities. You know, one of the things that we talk a lot about is equity and inclusion and ensuring that we have an environment that, that is, uh, you know, an anti-oppressive type spaces where families get access to supports and breaking systemic barriers down for, for families. And so we have a number of communities that were, to this day, I don't think there, every system is meeting the needs of these families, because some of them, you know, they, they, they certainly have different needs in, in the terms of care. And we're able to provide some of the support. So the third party providers have been operating these before and after school programs for us for a number of years. And Leanne will be able to tell you a little bit more about the details of that. And one of, one of, one of the big providers really kind of was struggling to hire staff. And so I think that's been quite clear across our system that there's, there's a shortage of staff. And so they weren't able to provide proper care. And so Scott and Leanne had a very short period of time to put this all together. And, and we started off, when, when Scott left and, and, and retired, we started off, you know, the year and, and took over approximately five sites and operated for the year. And what I can share with the team is just a little bit of my experiences and what I think is really important. Because when Scott talked about really, really important to get the business people on board and to get the senior team on board. Well, we're in a deficit year, major deficit year last year. And the program, as we know, we have to kind of work to that space of economies of scale where, you know, the revenue that you're generating has to, you know, pay. You can't subsidize to the tune of, you know, half a million dollars or more that we were subsidizing the program as a system to try to make her operational. But that was very real, that we were short some of these funds. And so the one thing I'm going to say to, to folks is that the region, it's, it's, it's really, really important to have a, a relationship with the region and the managers there. And, and, you know, we, we established this year a phenomenal relationship with the, the new, the, the new director of Children's Services, the commissioner in the province. I personally had at least, you know, 10 meetings with them already to try to help us and support us with the funding, ensure that we have enough spaces. The region's short on child, uh, the seal walk spaces. And so this has been part of the challenge is how do we ensure that we have enough spaces? We were at the beginning of this school year, almost a bit of a crisis, because we don't want a two tiered system where you're charging families a certain amount. And then there's no seal walk funding for the other school that you just opened up a brand new school and you have that space there. And then you don't have funding to provide a discount for those families. And so it makes it, we talk about equity and we talk about inclusion. And so we're trying to be in that place where we're, we're providing that kind of service. And so in the fall, we, through that relationship, we averted that, that crisis with, you know, getting some more spaces from the region. And, and we have other schools opening next year. We have another school opening. And so we're faced with the same scenario about the limited number of seal walk spaces available. And, and so because of this collaborative relationship with the region and Leanne and I having to, you know, do all sorts of connections and collaboration, not only with the region, but I'll give you an example. Leanne set up a meeting with every one of our, our partners, our third party providers just last week. And we had about 30 people in our, for a half day, working together, collaborating. We invited the region, the director in the region. We talked about some of the, the challenges and how we can collaborate together, creating, renewing those partnerships and our commitments to supporting families, finding ways to learn together. We're talking about professional learning and how we can ensure that everyone is learning and trying to find funding through, whether through the region or, or how do we share resources? How do we share data? One of the things that we're working and collaborating with a number of community agencies that are in our region right now. We have an organization called Our Kids Network. And so that network brings together numerous agencies and providers. And, and we collaborate and connect together. And then there's the, the EDI data that just, uh, just came about. And we're trying to kind of find ways to engage in that data, to use that and bring it to schools. And then, and rebuild those relationships with our schools and our after school care third, uh, the third providers with the schools. But also with our own board operated. I know Leanne is going to tell you a little bit more, because I think it's, it's quite phenomenal. You know, when you get to that space where you're actually at least breaking even financially, it's viable. We've got the full support of our senior team right now, our business department. We meet with them regularly. Our business department, uh, we meet with them regularly. We're filling them in on everything that's going on. Um, and so they're very on board with what we're doing. We're trying really, really hard not to raise fees, but it it does, it does have a, you know, it's a business, uh, it's an operating model that we have to put together and uh we have to act in that space of really that entrepreneurial spirit in order to to make this function and work. Um, and we have to look at it as a business. And this is one of the things that, um, you know, since I've I've been here trying to kind of focus on it from that business perspective. Um, and try to use the economy as a scale to make it uh operational, but also um ensure that we're not putting our board in further deficit uh with funding. Uh, because this programs need to, we figure out how to pay itself. But there there are still many challenges, I will say, in that because we're trying to run a business model and it's, you know, trying to break even with the costs. There are families that are left behind. People want, they want part-time. They don't want every day. They don't want after-school only. And so or or uh, you know, uh, they 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 just wanna bring their kids in the morning because the family is working. Uh, and affordability, of course, some of them have three, four children and that sealwalk funding is only for, you know, uh, the 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 students that are uh up to kindergarten. So these are the challenges that that we still continue to face and trying to open it up a little bit more for families. And we're working on that to get better at that. Uh, but I but I have heard from the model that that Leanne and Scott had put together initially. And it's evolved in many ways. And Leanne will be able to share some of that, um, some of those little nuances that have created the success of the uh, the staffing models in our system. So I'm gonna hand it over to Leanne because uh she's really uh, she's she's done so much of this work. Um, uh, part of my work has been a lot of learning and collaborating and relationship building with uh with people on the external. But Leanne is really uh running the entire uh um uh structure of this of this program. And it's and it's really, really successful. So I'll pass it on to Leanne.
Thanks, Aiman. Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I'll try and do a Kohl's Notes version for those of you on the call that know what that still means. Um, our journey at Halton started in May of twenty twenty-three. Um, uh, we actually had a provider step forward who indicated they could no longer provide service in five of our schools, offering before and after-school. Scott, at the time, was my superintendent. There was a decision made at the board level that it was the opportunity of the board to move forward and take over these programs. It kind of made sense. We had the space. We had the ECEs. Uh, it was just a matter of uh getting it up and going for September of twenty twenty-three um in the five sites that we had in Burlington. Um, I would lie if I tell you that 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 summer of twenty twenty-three wasn't a a blur. Something that typically should have taken nine months to license uh with the partnerships we have here in Halton that I have with the ministry in the region. I was able to push through the licensing in four to six weeks. So we were up and going and ready to receive children on the first day of school in September. That was also uh part um, the um, the relationship that I had to forge with a third-party system app uh for online registrations, which literally didn't go live until the week before the programs opened. So again, I would uh, I would be lying if I told you it was a good time. Um, but having said that, we were open in all five sites. We had children in our programs. The first year uh was a little challenging. Uh, I will uh put out there that wrapping your head not only around the Ed Act, but under the Childcare Early Years Act and licensing, um, and ensuring that you meet all the requirements and legislations under the CCEYA. Um, that took some time. Uh, for example, ECEs working in the before and after-school in the licensed childcare program have to have a valid first aid and CPR, an updated medical, and an updated criminal reference check. In our board, uh, ECEs working in full-day kindergarten, we have an online declaration which doesn't fly with the board after four years, with the ministry after four years. So it was trying to get all those little kind of kinks worked out uh so that everybody was ready to go. Um, we took over the new build that we just opened in September of twenty twenty-four. The board has made a decision that any new school builds uh will be board-operated before and after-school. We do have one that opened up this September. We have another one in Oakville opening up in this uh this September. We, the first year we did, uh, because of the time crunch, um, we staffed the before and after-school program with split-shift staff that you would find in a typical childcare uh before and after-school program. Uh, we were very lucky. Um, uh, you know, working for a school board and we talk about, you know, advancements in in different career opportunities. If you come into the school board as a before and after-school split-shift, you can move up into the full-day kindergarten program. There's the pensions, there's the, you know, benefits uh etcetera. So it makes it a little bit more appealing um to people uh in the childcare sector. Um, we have a lovely relationship with our etfo uh union uh that our DCEs were are a part of in full-day kindergarten. We worked collaboratively really, really well throughout the school year, had the support of the union to try and work out all the terms and conditions under the collective agreement to have our ECEs in full-day kindergarten do a wraparound. Um, kind of what Julie was explaining, um, with our, using our ECEs in full-day kindergarten to work in the before and after-school program. So this past September, we rolled out a hybrid staffing model. We have one EC that comes in at quarter to seven and works till two fifteen in the before-school program and an FDK classroom. I have another EC that comes in at quarter to eleven and works till six fifteen. We call them the wraparounds. Um, in the full-day kindergarten, the after-school program. But we also have a hybrid model, which I still have my split shifts in there. Um, because that allows me the flexibility of registrations without having to go out and have to hire more wraparounds. I'm 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 sure with every board, we have our critical paths and our hiring timelines and our postings that go out. And so basically, the wraparound shifts have one quote-unquote kick at the can um as far as um um hiring for those wraparound shifts. And for us, it happens in April. So any registrations that happen over the summer that drives my numbers up, I'm able to subsidize that extra enrollment with split-shift people. Um, to give you the benefits, and if parents love it, I can't say enough. Uh, we get constant positive feedback from families loving the idea of dropping off their child at seven o'clock in the morning to the EC that is basically with them for most of the day, kind of what Julie had talked about. And then, you know, being able to pick up at five o'clock or five-thirty and speak to the EC that was with them for most of the day. So it's that seamless um um day that Charles Pascal and FDK way back in the day. Um, you know, a great idea, uh, and it works. Uh, to give you some idea, we just opened up our preregistration last Monday for September of twenty twenty-five. And so we have seven sites coming online in total for this September. When I last checked on Friday, we have over four hundred and fifty families registered for September um for the before and after-school program. Um, we're in constant conversation with the region around the Canada-wide early learning childcare funding. Uh, we're very lucky in in Halton where they're opening up an application to receive more funding and expanding our existing um sites, uh, which we're in the midst of submitting that application. Um, yeah, it's a, I don't have to, um, you know, I can't say uh, but and so there's just so many good things about a seamless day using ECEs in a board-operated um program. The part of my portfolio as well is is the collaboration and the partnerships with our third-party childcare operators here in Halton. We have eleven operators um that provide before and after-school, early-on, full-day childcare within Halton. Um, and um, you know, the the partnerships are amazing. Um, like Aiman says, we're constant conversations um and collaboration. Um, yeah, it's just a, it's just a, it's a great, it's a great way to be. Um, it's a lot of work. Um, but at the same time, um, well worth it. So structure-wise, uh, just to talk about that a little bit, uh, principals really don't have anything to do with the before and after-school program. Uh, as manager, I have one supervisor under me uh who goes out and does the site visits and preps for ministry visits and public health department, etcetera, etcetera. Um, the the most common thread that the principals and I share is if a EC in a wraparound shift calls in sick, I'm responsible for finding the coverage because I need the before and after-school piece covered. Um, so constant texting, kind of collaboration and partnership. I meet with them on a regular basis just to kind of think of anything that we haven't thought of that they may encounter. Um, you know, there's been a few blips along the way as far as, you know, what happens with field trips, which was very solvable. Um, so wasn't a big issue. Um, we have an overlap with those two ECEs that come in uh for three and a half hours, which allows both of them to have their one-hour lunches, but also an hour and a little bit uh to do programming either for the before and after or FDK. So um, it's a lot of work, but once you get it uh down pat, it's um, it it's just really smooth. Yeah. I look forward to any questions anybody has. Um, hopefully I gave you a good overview.
You did, Leanne. And it was uh, you're you're doing a lot of very uh innovative things in um your area. And thank you, Aiman. Uh, uh, the present, the overviews were very clear. Thank you. Uh, the next one, uh, excuse me, sorry. The next one up is um Melissa.
Thanks, Gail. Hi, everyone.
Is um from the Waterloo region, uh, extended ma- day manager. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Melissa Hilton. I've been a manager for extended-day programs here at the Waterloo Region District School Board for the last eight years. Uh, directly operating extended-day programs in seventy-five schools, supporting just over four thousand children. So I can talk a little bit about our journey here in Waterloo. Um, our journey began with Pascal's vision and uh of the seamless day. And really, our senior leadership team had the courage to move forward and implement this vision. Um, we collected data on schools that offered childcare services. And when we looked at that data, it showed us um huge disparities across neighborhoods. So neighborhoods that scored lower on the um economic security index never had access to services. And so our senior team looked at that story and said, you know, families deserve better and we can implement this model as a pilot. And so we started small in a handful of schools, offering care to sixty-four children. I think Scott designed the menu at the time for snack. And uh, you know, we had to build procedures and really start this pilot program. Um, and really, to Aiman's point, it was to offer access in every community. We didn't want neighborhoods to determine which families had access to services and which didn't. And so we started small with a pilot. Um, our CMSM at the region of Waterloo was by our side every step of the way, supporting this important work. Um, we were able to lean on them throughout the process, as well as our childcare providers who, you know, have a lot of expertise and knowledge in delivering childcare services. And we certainly couldn't do this work without them. So today, we offer before and after-school programs in all of our schools that support students in JK to grade six. Um, so we offer a hybrid model as well, uh, similar to Ottawa, where third-party providers operate programs in twenty-four schools, where they also provide purpose-built childcare services to children who are zero to four years old. So they run the before and after-school programs in those locations. And then the school board operates the program in every other school. We use the economy as scale so that the revenue we make in our larger programs enables us to offer programs, you know, with with low enrollment, with three to five children out in rural communities that historically have been childcare deserts. So in twenty-ten, our data showed um nine percent of our students had access to before and after-school programs. Since we've implemented this program, we are now have services in every single school. So to Scott's point, you know, this model is viable. I think that um the ministry really needs to look at the viability threshold and setting a standard for school boards. Um, setting some expectations around the funding that's provided for early-years lead. Um, and school boards really looking at the data in terms of which schools have access to services and and what neighborhoods, and then what do we do with that? Um, in March twenty-twenty-two, the province signed on to the Sewell funding plan, and we were excited about that. And then we quickly learned that you had to be licensed in order to opt in for the funding plan. Um, I remember Julie, Leanne, uh, the region of Waterloo, we all got together. We scrambled to look at, you know, our next steps uh and make a plan to license our programs. So we quickly received support from trustees to move forward with licensing extended-day programs here in Waterloo. And we opened our doors in September as a, one of the largest licensed childcare providers in the province. And um, like Leanne, we had to work through some new requirements under the Childcare and Early Years Act. But we had support from our uh labor partners, Jen Wallage on on the panel here, uh, DECE local president, as well as the um uh president of the Educational Assistance Association here in Waterloo. And you know what? We leaned on our childcare providers for their expertise in helping us develop policies and procedures that would meet licensing requirements. For too long, we've run two systems, you know, the ed-education and childcare. And we need to be more integrated, to be really respond to the needs of families um and move forward in a coordinated way where we work in collaboration with our childcare partners to look at the needs of families. And how can we work together to meet those needs? To Scott's point, we have the space, we have the resources. So let's work together with our childcare partners and meet the demands for families. As a takeaway, I can see on this call, we've got lots of early-years leads, um, early-years managers across school boards across the province. I would just put a plug in for three Cs. If there's anything you could take away from today, consult with us. School boards operating this model that have been operating this model for years, we're here to support you. Uh, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. We've been doing this work and we're and we're here and happy to answer your questions. Collaborate with your CMSMs. Get together with them. What are high-priority areas? Which communities are being underserved? Where are the gaps? And then just coordinating a pilot. Start small. Pick two or three sites. Um, you know, and then if you build it over time, your programs will grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. I like that concept of the three Cs. That's a good takeaway. Thank you. Uh, excuse me. Um, next we have um Jen, Jen Wallage, uh, designated EC, early childhood educator and local president of the elementaries, Elementary Teachers Foundation, sorry, Federation of Ontario Waterloo District. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I'll just tag right on to what Melissa ended with. If you build it, they will come. Absolutely. Um, we know that waiting lists are huge. Um, and by providing this care, um, we're supporting our families that come to our schools. Um, I've believed in the seamless day since I heard about it and I heard about the the rollout uh of FDK. I started with the Waterloo Board uh September first, twenty-ten. I started negotiating a collective agreement with Scott, actually. Um, probably March of twenty-eleven uh and uh kept going from there. So we work really well together. We, I I appreciate uh the relationship we have with our board. Um, it's very collaborative. Um, I feel that as a partnership, we have set the bar and we've set it really high. And we work really hard to keep that bar high. Um, that being said, not everything is perfect, uh, as we know. Um, nothing is perfect in the world. And there are still growing pains, even fif- this is year fifteen for the Waterloo Board. Um, so there's still growing pains and there's still areas uh of improvement. But what, what the benefit is for early childhood educators to be part of this program is it's almost un- unbelievable because it provides stable employment. Um, unionized employment. And when you have unionized employment, you have pension, you have benefits, you have um accountability, you have stability, advocacy, professionalism, professional development, equity and unity. You have all of those things. Um, as may or may not know, only about fifteen percent of uh early childhood educators uh across Canada are unionized. So for boards to be providing this stability and this high-quality employment is fantastic. And it's it's only benefiting the families because that's who we're all here for, right? Without the families, we don't all have jobs. Uh, and that's, that's part of it. Um, we we work together when there's um something that's come up. We've come up with a lot something that's come up. We've come up with a lot of different, oh, I didn't think about that. So Melissa and I'll have a conversation and kind of determine where we need to go, or I'll call H R. Um, and determine, okay, does this need a policy, an operating procedure? Or is this something more uh, significant that needs to be addressed in collective bargaining? Can be any of that. Um, and and I have to say, we're a pretty good place to work. Uh, it's been great. We have somewhere in the area of seven hundred early childhood educators uh, working for the board. Both the occasionals and the permanents are represented by uh, the Elementary Teachers Federation of Ontario. Um, I see Scott's a little surprised because we started out in twenty ten with fifty seven educators. So we've, you know, we've uh, we've certainly grown. Um, and uh, with it has has our role as early childhood educators um, with the board. I can say to those contemplating it at boards, work with your labor partners. We're here to support you. Um, we're only here to make things better. Uh, we want to make sure that the 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 program succeeds. Um, we come with resources. We come with resources that can help support the program. Um, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. I think our, someone already said that. Um, and learn from those who have gone before you, learn from our our trial and errors. Um, it hasn't been a uh, straight road by any means. Um, there's definitely been bumps. Um, but there's never been a stop sign. Never been a stop sign. Uh, we've always worked together and been able to work something out. Even when the extended day manager calls you and says, guess what? We're licensing. And we need to have it done in two months. So that was uh, that was one of the bigger things that we've we've dealt with. Um, but we work really well together and uh, I'm really proud of the relationship we have. Um, and how far we've come. Um, again, there are still areas of improvement. Uh, but um, when we work together, everybody wins.
Thank you, Jen. I was actually taken aback when you said seven hundred educators. That's, that's quite a high number. Very impressive. Um, we probably will be having some questions from um, those that are attending, but I have a couple of questions that I'd like to um, start with. Um, everyone has talked about the importance of relationship development and collaboration. Um, how do you deal with the fact that some principals are more supportive than others and some will just absolutely say, no way, this is not going to happen? Um, have you faced this situation and how did you get past it? And anyone can answer uh, these questions?
I can.
And then Julie, I think I saw your hand up.
Am I going first or is Scott going first?
Oh, I I I can jump in. Sorry, I'm I missed that. Um, I I've I've had that before it started, right? Before the operation actually started in the school. Um, we've heard that from principals, heard that from several, but wh- when you sit down and explain that support's in place and address their fears, you can usually ping them off one by one. Wha- what are you afraid of? And they'll they'll list them and you can say, well, here's our plan for that. Here's our plan for that. We're not, you know, you're not going to be sitting there at six P M. waiting for a parent to pick up a child, you know, this isn't that. Um, the the what is this? You know, you're not calling parents delinquent from fees. You're not doing this. You're not, whatever it is their concerns are, you can usually address them uh, ahead of ahead of time. Um, you know, year one, uh, first batch of schools, year one, that was tricky. We asked a lot of them. I can't believe they didn't uh, you know, come at me harder. But uh, you know, as we grew and problem solved, uh, we were able to address it. And so even when Leanne um, in Halton, we were, had just had five schools, we really sat down with them one-on-one. What are your issues? What are your concerns? And you addressed them. And believe me, we had some, we had some there, some strong opinion people who would let you know. But we could address them. So I haven't found operationally along the way. Um, there's too many issues. One of the big things that Waterloo has done um, was creating budget, right, for materials, giving that to the schools. So that really helps principals solve a lot of problems. You know, all the kids are destroying the dodgeballs after school. Well, here, here's enough money. If they destroy one, buy them two. You know, and so little things like that make a huge difference. So I I find that uh, fear of principal opposition to be overblown, to to be honest, when you really um, sit down with them and take the time.
Okay, thank you, Li- Julie.
Thank you. And I agree exactly what uh, Scott uh, has been uh, sharing. I could add that just like in any other working um, environment, it's building relationships. And we have, because we are a larger program, similarly to to Melissa, um, we have team managers that work really closely with um, principals and vice principals. And they meet regularly, they have discussions, they essentially share staff. Because the principal um, is responsible for the staff during the core day and we're responsible for the staff before and after. And to support that collaborative work with the educator teams, we also have to demonstrate and model the collaborative work between the early learning department and the Ps and VPs. And uh, we've created resources like um, uh, administrator handbooks, uh, so that if we get a new administrator, there's lots of information for them. Regular meetings uh, with the team manager, they sit down and meet three times a year minimum and they have discussions and troubleshooting. And the bu- the benefit for principals is that there is actually another person supporting the supervisory mentoring and coaching of the employees, the registered early childhood educators. And they learn from each other. So it increases capacity for the principal. It increases capacity for the team manager because the principal provides them with more knowledge. So this collaborative work ends up permeating through the kindergarten day and then through the whole uh, school because some of the things that we are required to do, as we've mentioned through the C C E Y A, the Childcare and Early Years Act, that differ from the Ministry of Education Act. Um, sometimes it's actually beneficial for schools to use some of the same uh, procedures. So I think there has been a real benefit of understanding early learning by having team managers work collaboratively with principals who are operating extended day. Um, and the principals don't have the extra work even through the staffing. Uh, Scott, they've they've have their process where staffing is one of the two and we have a process that's a bit different. Um, and it's also, you know, given us opportunities to look at uh, positions of itinerant positions where we hire even more R E C Es that we can dispatch and send during the day to help support that work. So I think building relationships and understanding of both legislations and how you both could share the work has been amazing, I feel. Um, from a, um, and I can also share quickly, um, that even when we do surveys to principals, they absolutely always come back and say that the relationship and the work that they have with the department and with their team manager is very valuable to the work and for the families. As we have already mentioned, same principles, same teachers, same educators. It just takes away some of the guesswork.
Thank you, Julie. That was um, very clear. Thank you. Um, wasn't, did anyone else, I, did I see another hand that wanted to respond to that question? No? Okay. We have one in the chat. Um, uh, Sheila asks or or comments and asks, um, most if not all schools in our area already have before and after school programs, encompass early learning and care. We have pensions, uh, pretty decent wages. Um, and our focus is on the children in our care. I'm hearing a lot about viability, business case, uh, business um, uh, case review and revenue. Our focus is on children and providing kind, caring, compassionate care. I would love to hear what a day in the life of a child looks like and how does the before and after school look different from the school day? Thank you for that question, Sheila. Go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you, Sheila. Um, our extended day programs are guided by How Does Learning Happen? Ontario's Pedagogy. So programs are play-based um, and support children with uh, those play-based experiences. Um, there's lots of time for outdoor play as well, built into both before and after school. So lots of time for physical activity. Um, the benefits, you know, for the children are that seamless day where they don't have to transition to an off-site um, center at the end of the day and just working, as Julie shared earlier, with um, staff that they know from the school day. So building those strong relationships where children don't have to interact with several different staff throughout the day. So same staff, same environment, um, in a play-based program. At our board, we offer all of the same supports for children with special needs who maybe need access to equipment or um, designated space, sensory rooms, uh, educational assistance. So uh, those supports carry on into the after-school program so that those children receive all of the same supports that they receive during the core day.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone want to add to that? Excuse me, Julie?
Similarly to uh, Melissa, our board uh, operates the same way. What we have to, I think, keep in mind is that children are different from seven to nine or from three to six. It's an early learning environment, which means that there is play, there is a lot of fun. Um, there's learning that's happening, but it's not a situation where you assume you have a teacher in front and they're sitting down and desks and and they're learning. Kindergarten isn't like that either. Uh, so it's really a continuum of learning. So not only is it a continuum from seven to six, it's a continuum from, you know, kindergarten all the way to grade six. Um, and what is great from a child's perspective, some of the really quick stuff, for example, is say they're working on Lego and they've developed a whole village. And they have, you know, written things as to where the front door is and so on and so forth. They can then continue that play at the end of the day or come in the next morning and continue that play. Um, accessibility to uh, everything that's in the school. So there there are quite a few technical or foundational pieces that just seem to fit in and it really creates a seamless environment.
Thank you, Julie. Um, we have Amy. Amy would like to ask a question. Go ahead, Amy.
Hi. Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you, Jen Wallage, uh, for the invite to this uh, amazing platform. I recognize many faces on here and I work um, with quite a few of you and I have uh, wonderful relationships with each one of you. So thank you so much for opening this space. My question, um, you know, I'm, so I'm in Halton. I'm a H D S B. I am at Jen's. You know, whatever Jen does in Waterloo, I do over here in Halton, right? So maybe there's that uh, connectivity there. My questions and 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 wonderings and musings are around, now that we have these programs sort of like on the ground and started, um, how are boards like looking to incorporate professional development from an R E C E lens? I mean, we we know that Ed Boards of Education are very teacher-centric. They have very teacher-centric P D. They have um, and and what we do know is that we know that early learning in the C C E Y A and and the Ministry of Ed, you know, as early childhood educators, I kind of feel like we're a little bit of a square peg in a round hole um, type of situation. So I'm wondering how the plans are shaping up as we move forward and work out the kinks. Um, when we look at this large day from seven in the morning till six at night, um, when are we training our staff and how are we making sure that um, all of the participants, whether you are a teacher, an early childhood educator, an E A, a principal, anybody getting getting some of these um, really, really important and pedagogical shifts? Just wondering if anybody would like to speak to that?
Whoops. Sorry, go ahead, Julie.
So being creative is how we proceed with a professional development. Because not only do we offer before and after school, we also offer uh, careful daycare during uh, P D days and uh, the winter break. So how we circumvent that is we've decided as a board, there are two days where we're not offering early uh, childcare on a P D day. One is a federation day, uh, where they'll get training and another is uh, the ministry systematic training. On top of that, um, to get all of the educators uh, together, and I'm talking nine hundred of them. Um, what we do is we have through our uh, union partner, a memorandum of understanding that we bring in the R E C Es a day and sometimes two, depending if we get ministry funding. But a day before school starts and we have a full day of training and we've done a variety of ways. Sometimes it's two days of training and on the second day in the afternoon, you get to go to your school and prepare. And we've been doing that um, more regularly because of the licensing process. There's a lot of things that have to be in place and ready to go before we can greet uh, children in the program. Um, so we pay for that staff for a full day. We've done combinations of virtual and in-house. Um, virtual is less expensive, in-house is more expensive because you feed individuals and you have to find meeting space and but both are valuable and and my opinion, our E C Es, there are some that like just virtual and some that like distant person. So we kind of get the fifty fifty and one year you have fifty percent that love it and the other year, the other fifty percent love it. So from a P D perspective, we do that. Plus, our department prepares a whole bunch of little, sort of like lunch and learns. Um, or we have a uh, half an hour where we do a community of practice at the end. So say, for example, you know, through your attendance that by a quarter to six, most of the children are gone. Well, we'll take quarter to six to six fifteen and we'll do a community of practice. So it's defined different ways. Because if there was one thing I wish that we would be able to negotiate with our uh, between the provincial team, um, Ministry of Education and union partners is to negotiate planning time for our educators, which they're responsible to plan in kindergarten anyways. But uh, that would be one of the challenges that we're encountering. However, we just try and get really creative to find ways to provide because I agree with you, Amy. There's nothing worse than feeling like you're lesser than your colleagues. And if you're not uh, getting appropriate training for the job that you do or only certain type of trainings that you feel that being an R E C Es and being recognized, it's it's up to us to try and find ways to circumvent that. Not easy. You gotta be creative. But I'm telling you, it can work. And for P D days, sometimes what we'll do is depending on the numbers, uh, maybe educator A, B and C will be working with the children, D, E and uh, F will participate in P D and then the next P D, we switch. Uh, D, E and F will be with the children, A, B and C will do training. Like, there's just variety of ways to try and fit that in there. Thanks.
Thank you, Julie. Melissa?
Thank you, Amy. Uh, we certainly had fifteen years to try many different models to achieve this goal and and work through this problem. Um, and we've landed in a sweet spot. Jen and I have worked together to uh, come up with a plan so that the program does close with lots of advance notice to families. Um, for some of the P D days so that staff can attend mandatory training and um, participate in professional learning. And we also like as uh, as Julie- And we also, like, as, uh, as Julie shared, Ottawa does, look at parent pickup and um try to find some time that site-specific, where we can go out to a program and sit down with the educators. Uh, we could have a new educator starting mid-year where we need to review policies and procedures and go over some important information. All of our DECEs attend a half-day training in the fall where we go over licensing requirements. Um, and that's paid for during their workday. They're released from the school to come in. Um, so we offer several sessions for that. And then Jen and I collaborate every year to uh provide a full day of professional learning for the DECEs. And that's a WRDSB etfo jointly planned day of learning for all the DECEs. So lots of opportunity for professional development.
Thank you, Melissa. Um, we have a question. We, I see a hand up, uh, Holson. Is that correct? I'm sorry if I've mispronounced it.
Thor, hi, it's Entonet Holmes.
Holmes.
From Halton Catholic. I have a couple of questions. One is, I put it in the chat, but just around wait lists. I just wanted to know if any of the board run programs have any wait lists. Um, and then the second question is just around the, the uh PA days. Do the uh ECEs not participate with the rest of the school staff in their OCT partner on PA days or report card writing days?
Anyone like to respond? Thank you, Melissa. And then Julie?
So we currently do have waiting lists in before and after school programs. Uh, we do have to meet those ministry requirements for ratios. So we are always monitoring uh the number of staff that we have in program and our enrollment numbers. So out of our seventy-five locations right now, about twenty-five are sitting with wait lists and wait lists varying from five to in the thirties, depending on the program. Um, and, and really, we've got wait lists because uh of staffing challenges, similar to childcare programs in the community. Uh, we, we can grow but at a slow pace, so we just need to be constantly reviewing our enrollment, putting out postings, looking at the number of applicants we have. If we have enough applicants, we can hire, we can open up spaces. Um, so that's currently how we're managing that. And the second part of the question was with uh to do with report card writing PD days.
Well, just PA days, sorry, just in general, like, because our RECEs actually are part of the school-based, right? Uh, professional activity days, so they're part of the school community. They work with their, their partner. I was just wondering, do the RECEs uh at the boards that run before and after, do they participate in a school-based and have that sense of community with the school?
So the, the DECEs participate in five of the seven PD days. So they would participate in the professional learning, mandatory training, site-based PD that's offered on five of the seven days. The remaining two days were open for families, but they only work on one of the two days. So we take that whole group of DECEs and we divide them in half. Half work one of the PD days and, and half work the other day for report card writing.
Thank you, Melissa. Julie? And then Jen?
It also depends, in my opinion, how many children you have um, and how many educators uh you have. So when it comes to wait lists, uh currently, we started off the year with over two thousand uh families on the waitlist and we have over five thousand registrants. Uh, the reason for um waitlists is, uh, you know, we've mentioned at the onset that we are uh in a shortage, uh, a workforce shortage for registered early childhood educators. But it's not only them. Um, so based on the model, you technically have double the amount of educators that you do to operate before and after school and kindergarten based on the number of classrooms that you have in the school, the kindergarten classrooms. I have schools where I have four hundred um before and after school and I don't have enough kindergarten classrooms, so I can have the seven-seven model. So like Leanne, we also hire what we call early learning assistants that are non-qualified staff, that are split-shift staff. The way our economy is currently, even finding non-qualified split-shift staff, people need full-time work. Um, so the only challenge that we encounter to increase our capacity is really our ability to find enough staff, because we just simply cannot meet the demand. So from a waitlist perspective, it's citywide, it's province-wide. My third-party partners have the same issues. Um, and sometimes we have two programs or three programs in one school. Um, because sometimes I can oper- offer a program, but then I could also bring in the Boys and Girls Club. And one is free, one's not. Um, one uh is the YMCA. Uh, they charge. Like, we're trying to find what we can do to support families irregardless of if it's only the board or if it's only third-party partners. The demand is high. With Cwelk, we have seen an increase of demand. Um, and that makes sense because it's become more affordable for kindergarten families. Um, but then we will see in a year from now, will be really the first year that we're gonna see, are we gonna lose or drop off, you know, children once they hit grade one because families can't afford to pay for the full day? That's yet to be seen. Um, and uh from a PA perspective, um, I just wanted to mention that we only, as I said earlier, have two days where um we do not provide service. But what we do is we try and rotate and give everyone a chance or work on the schedule. Um, so that if your educator is working on report card writing, um, well, then we try and, you know, bring staff in and then they move out and they work with their uh OCT and then they come back in the program, but ensuring too, there's not too much change for children during the PA day. So it just requires thinking outside the box and creating schedules that are different, which school boards and principals are not used to. They create a schedule at the beginning of the year because it's so complicating to create. Um, so being more nimble and finding ways and creative ways to switch and even maybe take staff from one school, bring to the other, so that they could replace and switch. Like, there's a whole slew of doing it. It just requires lots of consultation with the powers that be and some creativity. Thanks. It's a great question.
Thank you, Julie. Jen?
I, I don't want anyone to get the idea that this was a, a quick fix. Um, we, we have landed on something for the past, I think this is year three, um, where, where it's amicable. Uh, it's still not perfect for either party, but um it's amicable and it works and it provides the care for the students. Um, but it was twelve years of trial and error and a lot of error on both parts, on both parts. Um, someone was always left out. Uh, and this is, this is what we've, we've worked really hard to um address and make sure that there is equity uh and that no one is left out and that everyone does get professional learning. So the two days that we actually um operate are on are the reporting uh and assessment days um for the teachers, uh, because in Waterloo, the teachers have the opportunity to work from home on those days. So they aren't necessarily in the schools for the DECEs to collaborate with them. So those are the two days that we've landed on and it, it's, it's worked really well, knock wood, uh, for three years now. And here's hoping we can keep it going.
Thank you, Jen. Leanne?
I just wanted to add the waitlist here. Uh, I feel like a small fish in the big sea of thousands of higher programs. But um lessons learned, uh, as far as waitlists, right now I'm only holding waitlists at two of our six sites. Um, the way we uh structured, the way we rolled out in twenty-twenty-three, as you can imagine, we were, you know, I'll call it like it is, we were building the plane in the air as we were going. Um, so um schedules for families, um, they start out at five days and then grandma wants them on Fridays and then hockey practice on Tuesdays and now we're down to one or two days a week. And so staffing and maximizing the spaces in the program became an issue last year. So when we rolled out in September of twenty-twenty-four, uh, we actually, um, we actually dictated to families what schedules we were able to accommodate. So before and after school, so just to kind of give a, a high-level summary. So when we look at placements for um September, we, I, I erase everything at the end of June. Uh, all current registrations in the program, all people currently on the waitlist, it all goes back to zero. So even though you're in the program for this year, does not guarantee you a spot for next year. It goes according to placement priority. So in April, I will place all full-time families requiring before and after-school care Monday to Friday. Those, those spaces will be confirmed. If you're looking for a part-time care, part-time days for me falls on a Tuesday, a Thursday, a Monday, Wednesday, or a Friday. That allows me to pair families up that are only looking for Tuesdays and Thursdays with a family that needs Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, which then stabilizes my numbers, maximizes my spaces, and then my staffing becomes consistent. So as far as that, that's worked really, really well this year. Um, again, I've been able to utilize a lot of people, spaces on the waitlist uh and give them spaces in the program based on that concept. Uh, PD days, I'm a big, um, I'm a big uh advocate for ECE PD. In my previous life with the board, I was the manager of ECEs in full-day kindergarten for eight years. So ECEs and full-day kindergarten reported directly to me. I was responsible for all of their PD. I'm able to um pull the staff on all of our PD days. Uh, Halton District does not operate on PD days, Christmas break or March break. So PD days for me, I have full-day staff learning uh for the split shifts. I also invite the wraparound ECEs into our PD sessions on the approval of their uh admin. And I've also opened it up to our supply staff as well. Um, I was lucky here in Halton. I was given a fifteen thousand dollar leadership grant uh that we had a really big PD day scheduled for November twenty-ninth. I was able to pull in and pay for a full day of training, including our supply staff, and the wraparounds joined us. Um, depending on what's being scheduled at the school level on PD days, sometimes ECEs find it more beneficial to learn about how does learning happen, documentation and pedagogy versus the grade-eight field trip. Um, so um, no, no, I'm not knocking it. I'm just saying. So, um, so yeah, so slowly they're all kind of coming around, asking if they can attend, but that's how we do our PD here.
Okay, we're getting close to the end. We probably have time for one more question. Uh, we have something from Stephanie, a question from Stephanie. Um, Stephanie's asking about um the before and after-school care uh fees. So question is, what are the fees for the before and after-school care? Um, six to twelve years uh for those boards who directly operate the before and after-school programs?
I can start off if you'd like. My fees for, and this is not kindergarten, so grade one to grade six for AM and PM, so both, five days a week is twenty-five thirty-three.
I can share the rate for the WRDSB for before and after care is thirty-one fifty. Before care is fourteen fifty and after school is seventeen dollars.
Sorry, I got cut off my screen, uh, so I'll just add to my rates that AM only is ten seventeen, PM only is seventeen fifty-three, and for a full day of care, it's forty ninety-six.
And for WRDSB, we don't have an increased rate for PD days. For PD days where we're offering full-day care, we just charge the before-school fee of fourteen fifty. It's a, a separate amount.
Here in Halton, for six to twelve-year-olds, our full day before and after is twenty-eight oh six and our before-school is sixteen oh one, our after-school is twenty-two twenty-eight.
Thank you. Uh, so I think we're almost um at that point where we are. Um, thank you all for joining us and we thank all the presenters. Uh, it was very informative and it seems like there's some really common threads, such as the importance of consulting and collaboration and collaborating um uh to meet those um, uh, to create equitable and, and um welcoming, safe spaces for children. And lastly, coordination. Um, and it always sounds like there's a lot of players that you're trying to coordinate with and it's true. There are a lot of um, uh, players. But from what we've heard today, it is possible and it's possible to offer quality. Um, but it is important to consult and ask questions. So we thank you also for all the questions that were asked and we thank you panelists. Thank you. Bye.